I call the meeting to order and ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
And welcome to the December 18, 2018 County Commission Meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are at the end of the counter in the white folder. And if you need a listening device, Craig in the front row can help you with that. That will move on to routine business. Item number one is a motion to approve the agenda. Commissioner Bender.
I'd like to make a motion first to amend the agenda to move items 10, 11, and 12 to immediately following the approval of the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to amend the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. I need a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved, second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. And the reason we moved 10, 11, 12 is just to accommodate our court service and our judges. So at that, we will move on to item number 10, which is authorize the chairman to sign the agreement between Minnehaha County and Lincoln County for payment of pretrial services expenses. Good morning, Erin.
Good morning. Erin Serska, Minnehaha County Commission Office. And before I get going, I'm gonna turn it over to two judges on the Second Circuit, the presiding Judge, Judge Howman, and then Judge Damgard, who has been a lead in getting our pretrial services and our PSA up and going for comment.
Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to be here today. On behalf of the Second Judicial Circuit, my name is Robin Howman. I'm the presiding judge of our circuit. We have 11 Circuit Court Judges here in Minnehaha County and four magistrates. The PSA is an instrument that has come online for our use in the last couple of months. It was a project that has been ongoing for a number of years. And one of the key items of that project has become a PSA assessment. It's something that looks at a person's criminal history, their risk to the community, and gives us a great deal of information about what danger this person might be to our community if they were released on bond or without bond during the pendency of a case. It's something that is one of our duties as judges to determine what that risk is to society when setting bond or determining whether or not somebody should be released. And in the past, had we wanted to, investigating somebody's history could take an inordinate amount of time based on the number of cases that somebody has had, the number of times they've failed to appear, or the number of times that they've had one type of offense or another. The PSA instrument is something that synthesizes all of that data for us in one very readable, very understandable form. So practically speaking, that means our magistrate judges who see people for an initial appearance after arrest have all of the information that they could want about somebody's criminal history, their risk to society, their tendency towards violence, just at their fingertips. It's information that they always had available in other formats, but the PSA and the system that we use called Open Lattice is something that really brings that information to light for us in a readable form. And when I asked my colleagues what their thoughts were about the PSA yesterday and over the last couple of weeks, one of our magistrates described the PSA as an instrument that saves her between an hour and 30 minutes every day in preparing for her court hearings. It's also something that we use on the weekends when we do something called 48-hour reviews. If somebody is arrested and doesn't have the opportunity to have a court appearance, either on Friday or they're arrested over the weekend, all of the judges take turns each week and we review all of those arrest reports for people who are not able to post bond. And so having that PSA available to us over the weekend when we're determining whether or not somebody should remain in custody over the weekend also gives us a great deal of information that frankly, we just didn't have access to on the weekends before. So it's a tool that has been very appreciated by our colleagues and I think something that works well in assisting us in determining what bond would be appropriate or if somebody should be released on bond and not kept in the county jail pending a case or over the weekend. So I don't know if you have any questions for me. I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions for the judge?
Thank you.
I'm just curious, you know, right now, can you kind of give us a history of how long you guys have been using that instrument?
The instrument has really been rolled out for our magistrate judges probably over the last couple of months. I'm sure Erin can give you some more detail about it. But the PSA staff, the pretrial staff, has been sitting in our courtrooms probably for the last year, just observing, learning the process, and identifying how the tool might be best used by us, along with the pretrial committee that's been headed by Judge Damgard. So I would say we've probably been seeing the risk instrument tool itself over the last two, perhaps three months.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Benner?
The only question I would have, is there a way that you've been able to track or that Erin would be able to track the success of your analysis, if you will, of the pre-
I think it's probably far too early to be able to track that. Cases take some time to get through the system, so it's hard to know what bond decisions have been fruitful and which ones haven't this early in the process.
Is there a national trend of success for that kind of?
I can't speak to that issue, but I imagine Erin can. She's the numbers person.
I think Erin can speak to that. Additional questions for the judge at this point?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much for having me today.
Judge Damgard, did you want to say anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay, thanks for coming. Erin, do you want to finish up on this item number, which is authorize the chairman to sign the agreement between Minnehaha County and Lincoln County for authorizing a pretrial service expense?
Yes, and I do have a PowerPoint to go through to summarize the work that we've done over the past year. So we will be going through some of those numbers briefly. As Judge Howman indicated, the PSA itself has been completed in front of the judges for magistrate and 130 court since August, beginning of August. But we have had staff and the work has been going for a very long time. In fact, the planning for this process has been going on for three-plus years. We've had at least two studies that you've all seen numerous times, if not more. We have two MOUs, one with the Arnold Foundation to utilize the PSA, which at the time was a competitive application process. And we have MOUs with the UJS to access the state court system and to access their portal for the III or NCIC data, which is key to implement the PSA and to give the information to the judges they need. We have built from scratch Open Lattice, which is a software application to utilize the PSA, and we have access to two other systems, Odyssey, which is the state court data, and local law enforcement data as well. So not only do we have access to these and we built them, we built them from scratch. We've been working with Open Lattice to automate and bring in the court data, and we just got the agreement signed to bring in our law enforcement data. So as we're getting up and going, we need to make sure those data systems were up and running and correct before we put them in front of the judges. We have had staff for just 12 months this month. We have Elizabeth Kalies and Janelle Ingles here, our two pretrial staff, who've done a phenomenal job coming in, hitting the ground running to build something new from scratch. They completed law enforcement standards and training certificate to be a terminal operator to access the III information. In fact, they both got 100%. They did 160-plus hours of onboarding training, which included completing what they call the pretrial fundamentals course, which is equivalent to a master's level course. Implementation process, we've done phase one, which is creating, integrating, testing PSA software application and processes, again, starting from scratch, creating a whole new process, not just for the county, but also with the courts, can be complex. And we wanted to make sure we had a lot of things ironed out before we went live. All of that's going, and we hit phase two, which is going live with the PSA for initial appearance at 1:30. As you can see from the numbers there, the average PSA count per day is around 22, completing about 155 per week and just almost 700 per month. Just some data to date, as we have, what you see right here is called the decision-making framework. The grid indicates where they would fall. The PSA has three scores, and the NVCA, which is the New Criminal Activity Flag, New Criminal Activity Score, and the FTA, which is the propensity not to come to court.
Do we have this presentation? Is it on Dropbox?
No.
Okay. Can we get it afterwards?
Yep, yep. You can email it out. Our data person was on maternity leave, so we're getting together the, I wanted to make sure we presented the most recent numbers.
And that was not you on maternity leave as our data person?
No. Nope, that was not me. But what you see is this grid. The colors indicate a release standard or contact standard, which is the next phase. Just wanted to give you an example of where the scores are falling and some of the numbers that we've done. So since we've gone live in August, we've completed almost 3,000 PSAs for magistrate So some of the outcomes so far, as you can see, of the 3,000, they're still around 1,900 pending. That's a reflection of how long it takes for a case to process through the court system. We've had 200 successes canceled, means that the PSA got moved to a different county or one shouldn't have been done because of the current charge. Declined and dismissed, those are state's attorney's decisions. So by the time that the person was seen, they were closed, so it's considered a success, but that's because the charges were dismissed or declined. And then the failures because we have rearrests or failure to appear. You can see that the rearrests are one of the biggest reasons for failure. What we're trying to do next is, kind of the next layer would be, what does that 400 represent? Is, how many people does that represent? What you see to the right is, they call it the step increase. So if somebody comes in and they score, you know, in a green, in any of them, if it's a more serious charge, they automatically get stepped up a supervision level. So those are how many we had step increases. Next steps is, the next step is to have the PSA ready for circuit court in the morning. We're ironing out those processes as well. Right now, we're testing the PSAs, making sure that we can meet the deadline of 9:00 AM to get everything ready for the judges in circuit court. And then the next phase, which will be rolled out in quarter one of next year, is to have more release options. Right now, the grid isn't being utilized as much because we don't have the additional release options for the once-a-week or once-a-month check-ins, but we're relying and developing technology to check-in kiosks. Right now, Open Lattice believes that facial recognition is actually the best and easiest technology to deploy, so you would have a check-in kiosk for those to check in, and it would be based on their facial recognition. So it's interesting how technology goes, and one step after that would be even looking at using a smartphone app to do some of the same type of thing, including communicate with pretrial staff, and then also do court reminders via text message, phone call, and even email, because email is free, you can access it for free at local libraries. And some of the other next steps include, this work is one of the pieces of our MacArthur Foundation Safety and Justice Grant work, which is one of the next items on the agenda, to look at different release options, look at case processing. One of the functions of pretrial could be helping expedite cases as appropriate through the court system, and we're working through the grant process and the courts to look at the data, dig in as a team, and see if there's any best practices we can implement to help expedite the court process. And then the following one, which is what this agenda item is asking for approval today, is part of the grant is to pay for a part-time staff for pretrials. We can add a third pretrial staff to implement the next few phases. And the other half of that pretrial staff would be 25, around 25% paid for by Lincoln County and 25% paid for by Minnehaha County. What I'm asking for today is approval for the commission chair to sign the agreement with Lincoln County to cost share the third pretrial staff.
Okay. Any questions for Erin? Commissioner Burr?
Erin, thank you for the presentation. How, with your chart, how do we compare with what we expected when we started to implement this? And how do we compare with national expectations or results on this program?
So, you know, we're actually pretty in line with a lot of the stakeholders that are on the table for the past two or three years on where we would be falling. And in fact, one of the, as far as nationally goes, if you look at the red, we have a lot in the red area. Pennington County is implementing this as well, and they're seeing the same trend. And the red just means that they'll more than likely not come to court and be rearrested. But we do have a very, we call them frequent flyers, super utilizers, individuals that repeatedly get arrested for vagrancy-type crimes, and they're the ones that are mostly taking up that red area. The community is already looking at addressing that. The Triage Center is one aspect, and there's other strategies looking at, how can we respond to those folks differently in the community? But otherwise, we are just, like I said, this is just one of the first looks of our data since we went live as far as the rearrest and the FTA, and we want to make sure that that data is correct, and then we'll kind of dig deeper into how we can reduce that. And that's also what you'll see in the rearrest in the number two, is we want to see, even though there's 400, how many people does that actually represent? And we have some individuals that, you know, are arrested hundreds of times during the year, so.
Thank you.
Additional questions for Erin? Commissioner Bender?
This is not so much a question as a comment. I just, you know, it's easy to lose tack of these processes, even for us, when we're not directly working on them every day. And I know a lot of work went into this. It just wasn't like some plug-and-play thing that you bought off the internet and just adopted, that you guys spent a lot of time developing this and working with stakeholders to make sure that we're using the right data to come up with the Christmas-like motif that you have over there. And so I just want to thank you and all the folks that worked really hard on getting this process to where it is. And, you know, it was a bit of a risk for Minnehaha County to authorize, you know, positions. Positions are hard to come by around here, as everybody that comes to budget knows. And so we're glad to see that this is up and running. We're glad that you guys are hitting the ground running. And if there aren't any other questions, I'd make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Kurski?
I'll second the motion, but then I have a question. I know we're real early into the process. When do you expect to come back to us to tell us what type of results we're seeing? I mean, reductions in jail times, failed to appear, that type of thing. When do you anticipate coming back?
Yeah, I would say, you know, we could do, I would probably, after the first two quarters of next year. One of the actually most successful strategies is just a simple court reminder. We're all adults. I get my text messages and emails and phone calls from my dentist to make sure that I go there on time, and it's no surprise that that same strategy works for court appearances, and that's why we're deploying that. Pennington County has started just with phone calls and has seen a dramatic difference in the FTA. And so once we get the court reminder implemented, we'll see some changes in that. For the rearrest, that's where we're going to dig into, what are the charges? What do we need? How can we lower that? How can we respond differently? And when we have, you know, an array, a continuum of release options for the judges to use, like a check-in kiosk, I think we'll see some of those numbers decrease. And that's another thing, as far as some of the, you know, if you look at the utilization of the other resources in the community, once we deploy the other resources such as, you know, the more release options, then we'll be able to kind of come back and say, what does that look like and what was the impact on the rest of the system?
Okay.
Also, at the same time, I will just caveat that the grant that we're going to talk about next has some different strategies as well that will possibly impact that.
We'll probably hear more from you in the middle of next year sometimes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Also, we're talking about approving this agreement between us and Lincoln County. We have had conversations with Lincoln County and the benefits of what doing the public safety assessment for Lincoln County would be, those people are arrested in Sioux Falls and brought to our jail, and they were missing out on the opportunity to go through the public safety assessment. And so we feel like we have good data and opportunity for Lincoln County, and they felt the same way. So they will be hopefully signing today also and signing on for the two years that we have the grant process, so we can evaluate how this is helping both counties, so.
With no other comments, I have a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 11 is authorize the chairman to sign the award letter to accept funding from the MacArthur Foundation Safety and Justice Grant. Erin?
Thank you, Commissioner. Moving on, so originally, we were asked to apply for a MacArthur Foundation Innovation Fund grant, and it was in the amount of $50,000, and we used that to do the planning process for the community triage center. All those reports are publicly available on the website right now, concept report, baseline report, which is being updated, sequential intercept map and such. Because of that work and how our community leadership capacity was able to come together, come around a goal and develop that, we were asked to apply for the next step increase of grant funding, which is called the implementation site. We put together an application, and we are approved for a total of $700,000, which is $350,000 once per year for two years, to implement a work plan. So what I'm asking for today is signature to sign the grant award letter so we can draw down the first payment of the grant. The attached budget lays out some of how the funding is going to be used. We didn't get awarded the full amount we applied for, which is actually very common of this grant cycle application. This is, I believe, their third cohort of implementation sites, and they've kind of tweaked it each time they did it. Just as a note to you folks, some of the, under the personnel, the only piece that we're moving forward with right away is the pretrial coordinator, which I just discussed. And the other positions are going to be decided later in around March, February, March, April, with our technical assistants. They want to come in, do a little more data digging and working with our stakeholders and our courts, our state's attorney, our public defenders, to decide what best strategies would be good to implement utilizing that funding. But the rest of the budget will have, has already started to be implemented to do meeting facilitation and attend conferences and other items that are listed.
Any questions for Erin on this part of the?
Chairman Chair, I'd make a motion to authorize you to sign the award letter from the MacArthur Foundation Safety, Justice, and Challenge Grant.
And a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 12 is authorize the chairman to sign an agreement between Minnehaha County and the Sage Project Consultants to provide meeting facilitation for the MacArthur Safety and Justice Challenge Grant project.
All right, thank you. This is the last one. Again, thank you for letting us move to the front so we can have the judges here. But the last one is just to approve the contract with Sage Consulting. They're the same consultants that brought us through the implementation, or not, the Innovation Fund from the MacArthur Foundation, and the foundation recommends using a facilitator. So I'm just asking that you sign the contract so we can have them on for the next year for our grant implementation this round.
Okay. Again, questions on this part of the agenda? Is there a motion?
Move approval.
I have a motion.
I'll second that.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Erin. Thank you, judges, for making time and ladies, for making time in your morning to come and visit with us. Thank you. With that, we'll move back to item number two, which is an approval of the commission meeting minutes from December 11, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $3,592,868.74.
Pay the bills.
The motion.
Second.
Are there any comments on the bills? Commissioner Burr?
I just would comment, as we often do, we have a $2.8 million transfer to the state on motor vehicle licensing things, so that's a big chunk of what's in there.
And there was also a big bill from the Highway Department on putting new trucks or something, purchase of vehicles. And so actually, that puts our bills way down low if you subtract out those two items. So I have a motion and a second to pay the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports. Item A is the Minnehaha County Public Advisory, excuse me, Public Advoc Advisory Board minutes from November 28, 2018. Item B is the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office Report for November 2018. And item C is the Minnehaha County Services Biannual Client Survey Report for December 2018. And all three of those reports are on file at the auditor's office. I'll tell you, I don't remember if we've had that client survey before. It was very good. It was very nice, and if you have a minute, you can look at the survey in the book. Just got some nice comments about things that go on in our human services department. Item five is personnel actions. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
And a second, any questions for Carrie on the personnel actions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item B is a special commission action to approve a pay increase. Carrie Dever, good morning.
You might have noticed that your personnel memo is a little bit longer today than normal. The reason for that is we have all of our variable hour staff increases listed today. And as we went through those, we noticed that one of our individual's salaries doesn't reflect that he's serving at the certified status. So the reason that we're asking for item number B to be approved is to rectify that situation, increases pay more than is allowed by salary policy, to recognize that he's serving as a certified civil process server.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second, to approve the special action on pay increase. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number C is a special commission action, again, to approve an appointment. Carrie Dever?
We're currently recruiting for a new director of equalization. That process is still ongoing, and now that Diane has retired, we're asking for approval to appoint Corey as the interim director of equalization and approve a temporary 10% increase for him.
Okay. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. And item D is a special commission action to approve a new position clarification.
Okay. You might recall that during the budget process this past year, the state's attorney requested and you approved a new position for him to work with digital discovery. At that point, we weren't sure what the classification was going to be, if it was going to fall more towards a computer-type position or something more specific to this realm. Erin's completed the position description questionnaire. We've looked at the position. We're recommending a new classification title of digital discovery technician at a pay grade 14, and we're asking your approval to get that up and running and start recruitment.
Thanks. If there's any questions, the state's attorney is here. Otherwise, they would look for approval.
Move for approval.
A second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Erin, for stepping in.
Thank you.
Item number six is applications or abatement recommendations for approval. There are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. There are none. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. There are none. Next, we have opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to anything that is not on today's agenda?
I would like to take a personal privilege and introduce my parents. Jim and L. C. D. Cray are here. They have not been to a commission meeting before, and they're leaving because they're snowbirds, and I said you better come today. So thanks for coming, Mom and Dad, and it's nice to have you here.
Do they want to go to the podium and?
Yeah. Did you want a special comment? No. No, you don't. With that, we'll move on to regular business, and now we're moving down to item number 13. Item number 13 is authorize the chair to sign the 2019 agreement between Minnehaha County and Carroll Institute for IVC Housing. Carrie Benz, good morning, Carrie.
Good morning. I'm going to do my best to make it through this and not sound too horrible, so.
Might have to whisper.
So this morning before you is the IVC housing contract renewal. This is not a new contract. It's actually a renewal that's been before you many times previously. The contract was initially entered into back in 2012, and the partnership has worked out incredibly well with Carroll Institute, and Gary Tushen and Tiffany Butler are both here from Carroll Institute. It's been a really positive working relationship with them. It allows detox to transfer people who are no longer in need of being in detox. They've kind of gone through that process and are really looking at having a placement that's a transitional placement, that's prepping them to move on to more long-term placement for their treatment. And so the primary changes that you have before you in this contract, however, there's two, the financial part as well as the number of beds. When we initially entered into the contract with them back in 2012, we started out with 12, or with eight beds, and that was decreased a couple of years ago to four beds, and this year, we are looking at decreasing it to two. The primary reason for that is over the course of this past year, we really have only utilized one to two beds on a fairly consistent basis. A few things, a few reasons that may be that we can attribute that to. I think there is a better means of getting people placed into long-term treatment much quicker. The state has seemed more amenable to that, and I think that we've really done a better job with the IVC process. I know we've been working on streamlining that. Carroll obviously has worked diligently on trying to get on board the, some attorneys Carroll obviously has worked diligently on trying to get on board the, some attorneys that help us have more positive, really, IVC commitments that really focus on stipulations that assist the person in moving forward rather than writing stipulations that really just aren't obtainable. And so with this contract, it would be approving the two-bed reserve at New Horizons. The only difference would be is we would increase that amount by 3% over what the contract was last year. So for the four beds, the contracted amount was the 111, 330. We would decrease that, obviously, to two beds, so really in half, but then take that half and increase it by 3%. I think that Carroll Institute is, that 3% increase is well warranted. They've been very positive partners in this and have proven to step up time and time again. The other part that just then changes is the number of beds, we'll go from four to two. They have identified that if we go over that two, it isn't that we wouldn't be able to contract four additional beds, we would just do that on a day-to-day basis and pay that daily amount. And I would welcome Gary or Tiffany to certainly join me at the podium if they have any comments they'd like to share with you, or if you have questions, we can entertain those, too.
Is there any questions for Carrie? Commissioner Karski?
Just, thanks Carrie, and Carroll Institute, you guys have been great, you know, it's a pretty big amendment to the contract, appreciate you being amenable to it. You know, over time, we've gotten better, basically, with what we do and tweak things, and this is a very good thing for, I think, all parties, so appreciate you bringing this to the table and working on it. Thank you.
If there's no more questions, I'd ask, oh, excuse me.
I just, you know, the expression IVC means a lot to us, but the people watching may not understand, so could you maybe throw a little explanation on that?
Sure. Ivy stands for involuntary commitment. When an individual is oftentimes engaged in addiction, their decision-making abilities are inhibited a bit, and so there are oftentimes family members or friends or others that engage in desiring to do an intervention in hopes of assisting that person to get treatment. And so they can file an involuntary commitment that then assists that person into getting into treatment. So initially, typically on an IVC, you'll oftentimes see that someone is brought to our detox program, they're assessed there, and often the counselor will either recommend the inpatient treatment, or if the person can abide by, or they feel that it may be best for that person to engage in outpatient treatment, they can make those recommendations, and then from there, that person that can engage in treatment is assisted in looking at funding, et cetera. Oftentimes, I would say, many of those individuals end up going to the ARCH, which is certainly a program that Carroll Institute also runs and operates. So our, the spectrum of services is quite broad, and their engagement with our community has been second to none, I would say, so we're fortunate to have them on our team. I would really commend them for a positive working relationship and a job well done.
I'm going to invite Gary and Tiffany to come up and just, I mean, this is your opportunity to just kind of tell us a little bit about Carroll Institute or the work that you guys are doing for us in our involuntary commitment, and so we appreciate you making the time to come over here and give you an opportunity to talk a little bit about it.
Sure.
My name's Gary Tushen, I'm the executive director. My voice took a sabbatical, so I'll yield to Tiffany, otherwise I'd be more, I do want to say this, though. This initiative back in 2012 was something that was needed for the community, and you folks stepped up the fight and entered into an agreement with us, and we're very fortunate to be able to respond to that. I also want you to know that despite the reduction, I mean, it is, to in large part, is some success, but if we have things that spike up or there's, you know, maybe a short-term trend as far as access for needing more, Tiffany and I certainly stand ready. We have flexibility within our capacity with other programs to be able to be responding to that, so I just want you to know that, so I'll yield it over to Tiffany. Thank you.
Thanks Carrie.
I know Carrie did a great job describing what we do at New Horizons, so I will entertain any further questions that you have before I go into other services.
Is there any questions for Tiffany?
A lot of times what we've done, because of the lack of capacity that individuals coming into New Horizons to fill the beds, I've worked very closely with Carrie and some of her staff to be a little bit more creative on how to utilize those beds, so maybe temporarily, maybe they don't come from detox, but we'll put them in a bed until they can get into a bed at our residential program, whether it's the ARCH or through our DOC Women's Program, also at New Horizons. So the other program within New Horizons is 20 beds for Department of Corrections females, so they can live with us if they need to. Transitional housing case management services do not necessarily have to be in treatment or going into treatment in the future, but they do have access to those resources if needed. So just trying to be creative on how to fill those additional beds when they're not being utilized by an IVC individual. We have mental health staff that do come over and meet with the individuals if needed, if they are having some crisis intervention needs. I myself can go over and do a quick assessment and make a referral if needed for more intensive services until they can get into that inpatient bed that they're waiting for.
Thanks Tiffany. Are there any additional questions? Commissioner Bender?
I'm just curious, when folks get into your inpatient treatment program, what's the average stay for folks?
So we do not provide inpatient treatment, but when they come in as an IVC, our average length of stay is nine days.
Okay.
So over the, from January 1 of this year through November of this year, average length of stay has maintained at nine days with an average person of one per day.
And then if they get into the residential program, like at the ARCH, what would be an average stay there?
If we can keep them that first 30 days, they usually will stay an average of about 79 days total. If we add in all the individuals who left within the first 30, it bumps down to about 60. We encourage that they stay a minimum of 90, so they can get at least three months of sobriety, some transition planning, a solid transition plan out, that we see a lot more success the longer they stay. We have had individuals that have stayed upwards of a year within our residential program. There is no limit, we don't have a cap on how long they can stay.
Thanks Tiffany. Any additional questions? Look for a motion.
Move approval. Second.
A second to authorize the contract, to sign the agreement between Minnehaha County and Carroll Institute for the IVC Housing. All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thanks Tiffany and Gary for coming and filling us in again. Item number 14 is authorize the chair to sign two agreements for the proposed housing advisory board study. Carrie Benz.
Okay. Okay, so the proposal that's before you is not one that's new, you actually have heard about this one previously at the joint city-county meeting. This first really focuses on getting involved with the study, and it really evolved out of when local leadership asked some questions in regards to what is HAB and what is its meaning, what's its purpose, and what's its efficacy? And it raised great questions. It offered us the challenge to really identify what is it that we need to do to best address the needs in our community. Then along in June, we have the resignation of the HAB coordinator position, and so it really offered us the opportunity to engage in a little bit deeper discussion about do we need that position? Is it something that with the rearrangement that the city is having with new leadership, is that something that they can engage in more in one of their departments? Is it something that we can engage here at the county at a different level? And so the city and the county engaged in a multitude of meetings, I think there was maybe four, maybe five meetings, that we had that we really sat and discussed what would be the best optimal outcome that we could look for. And we decided that ultimately, we didn't have that answer, and that by engaging in a study, to really look at what are the metrics and benchmarks that we could look at that would better inform us of what are the needs of our community, as well as help us maybe identify what structure do we need to have organizationally that would best prompt moving forward? And so the agreement that you have before you is with Augustana Research. Their proposal is offering us the opportunity to do just that. It would provide us information necessary to define the mission and the vision of HAB, as well as identify some research questions, and looking at other communities that are similar to Sioux Falls in what they're doing with their communities and what their structural organization looks like. And so with that agreement, in signing that agreement, the amount is for the 26, 850, and that would include not only all the research, but it would be consolidated then into a final report that would be provided to both the city and the county. Knowing that this agreement is the HAB position or the HAB board is a dual-funded position, that means that the city would pay half and the county would pay half, so that would mean that the 13, 4 and 1/4 would come from each entity to formulate that total. And so Augie is ready to go, they're ready to engage in that study. They've provided us kind of the timeline in regards to when we can expect some of those outcomes. It may adjust a little bit with the holidays and those type of things, but I think probably by the end of April, we could be looking for a report that would best lay that out for us.
Thanks Carrie. Are there any questions? Commissioner Burr?
Has the city acted on this yet?
They have, they have. They have taken this before their group, and they have approved it, just the mayor. The mayor has signed it. So there are two motions connected with this, I'll read the first one, if you have additional questions, we can sure take those two, but item A is an agreement between Minnehaha County and the Augustana Research Institute for providing research services, and as Carrie said, that's for the amount of $13,425. Are there any additional questions on that part?
Move approval of that one.
A motion and a second. Comment, Commissioner Burr?
Hey, I just, I mean, I just wanted to piggyback a little bit on what Carrie said, I mean, we have all talked about this, just like all other things that's easy to lose sight of, but, you know, this is certainly not any indication that we think that homelessness in Minnehaha County has been cured by any stretch of the imagination, it's just, you know, this joint committee was formed quite a while ago, and the world's changed, and we just want to make sure that we are still using the most effective techniques, using our dollars in the wisest possible way to make an impact on that community, so. So anyway, that's all I wanted to say, I think this is going to be worthwhile.
I do, too.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Burr?
I'm not going to support this. I honestly think that we would be better off giving this money to the Glory House or Bishop Dudley House, and tax money is not free, and just because we've had a resignation and now have a little bit of money doesn't mean we need to rush out and spend it. I really think that studies are not always the best way to solve these issues, but I appreciate the sincerity of everyone that supports it.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Commissioner Burr. I do have a motion and a second to approve. If there's no additional comments, all those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. Item B is a cost-share agreement between Minnehaha County and the city of Sioux Falls for the research expenses for the Augustana Research Institute for the Housing Advisory Board Study. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
Second.
Any comments on the sharing? All those in favor say aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thanks Carrie. Item number 15 is consider a motion to approve the Highway 137 construction change order number three. Highway Department. Jacob, Jacob, kept DJ on here, sorry.
Yes. DJ let me know I was coming to this this morning, so.
Thank you.
Here I am. We've had two previous change orders on this project. One was a reduction where we swapped out flared ends for, or sloped ends for flared ends, which saved us $6,800, and then the other one was to add parapets. This third change order is for 6,000 cubic yards of contractor furnished borrow to obtain safe slopes on the edge of the highway. It was designed with safe slopes, but we had more shrinkage in our subgrade than we anticipated, so we were short 6,000 cubic yards. Another item on here is, in order to do that work, we're giving the contractor five working days, but they were unable to meet the completion date, so the second line item is for three days of liquidated damages. Should be noted, Olivia cut an air yesterday, the contract amount on here got off on change order number two and is off by $19, so those will have to be revised before this can be signed, but we would still seek approval for the change order prices.
Jacob, I'm going to ask you for two, are you done?
Yes.
Two things. One is identify yourself in your department.
Okay.
Sorry.
Jacob Mars, Highway Department.
Yeah, thank you, that's just for our listening audience. And then two, do you know if the unit price is the same as the bid price?
We did not have a bid price for this, for this item. It goes under unclassified excavation.
Okay.
Which is paid per plants quantity, you don't measure it in the field, so anything above and beyond that is negotiated work.
Okay, thank you Jacob.
Yep.
Are there any additional questions from the commission? I will have, the state's attorney is writing me the motion, so if you give me just a second, I will tell you what the motion is. Oh, okay. Okay, I guess we don't have to have a different motion, we can have a motion to consider approval of Highway 137 change order number three.
So moved. Second.
A motion, a second, we need a roll call vote, please.
Yes. Bender?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks Jacob. Item number 16 is authorize the chairman to sign a one-year contract extension between Minnehaha County and the Armour Correctional Healthcare. Warden Gromer, good morning.
Good morning. Jeff Gromer, I'm the warden at the jail. I just have a contract extension to present with Armour, who's our medical and they subcontract the mental health services, but they provide both medical and mental health services at the jail through this contract. Contract is proposed at 3% increase from last year's. The contract amount is what was used for budgeting purposes last spring, did establish a 2019 budget, those numbers haven't changed. And the services Armour is providing, the medical department in the jail's in a very good spot right now. Over the last couple of years, we've seen some dramatic improvement and stabilization in some of the staffing problems that they experienced earlier in the contract. With this stabilization and the way the contract's running, or the medical operations running right now, we're finally able to move forward with the NCHC accreditation that we've been working towards since the start of the contract with Armour. They're finally in a spot where I think we can move forward with that. That accreditation will be a very good thing for the jail, it provides some federally recognized or national commission-recognized standards for that medical operation to work under. It gives them some direction as far as what, what standards they need to meet in various classifications of providing that care. It'll also provide us some defensible standards which we're operating under, which are audited on a routine basis to ensure compliance with them. So that accreditation will be a good thing, it's a pretty major undertaking for them, there's a lot of very detailed standards, a lot of reporting requirements that goes into it, so it's, it's actually very good that we're at that spot now.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the warden? Commissioner Burr?
I just want to comment a couple of things. You know, when I saw this on the agenda, I realized that there's been an absence of issues with medical care at the jail, and I certainly appreciate that because when there have been issues, it's been.
We've, we've seen, like I said, over the last couple of years, there's been a lot of things that have stabilized in that medical department, we're not seeing as much fluctuation in a lot of different areas. Our costs are really more or less under control, we're not seeing these large bills for hospital stays, large bills for off-site care, and it just, even as an appearance, working over there day in, day out, everything seems to be in a lot better place than it was previously, and I don't mean that to say we were struggling previously, but it's just running very well right now.
Intelligent, I appreciate that. Let me say one more thing, Madam Chair, that a 3% raise seems pretty minimal, but the public needs to recognize that we're functioning under the property tax limitation, where we can raise taxes only by the rate of inflation or 3%, whichever is less, and it's not been 3% for 10 years or more, and, but it's, it's another example also where people think that government should run like a business, we're not making any money running a jail, and we don't expect to, and thank you for your work.
Yeah, I will add on that 3% increase, the way the costs and the funding works out through this contract is, is we only pay for the medical services that are provided. So with this, you know, it's a 3.4 or 3.5, roughly $3.5 million contract, we get billed for our costs, for Armour's costs, plus projected costs for the upcoming month. So what happens is, is when we pay those bills, we do what's called a true-up, where we've paid those projection, projected costs, and then we're on about a two-month cycle. So in December, I'm going to be paying the December bill plus the October true-up. So that, what that true-up amounts to is, is then, at that point in time, we've taken the projections from October and compared them with the actual expenses for October. So if the actual expenses for October are less than what the projections are, we get a, basically a credit on that upcoming bill, so we're only paying for services that we're providing. If Armour doesn't, Armour's projecting the 3.483 million for the upcoming year, if we don't use all that money, the county doesn't pay it.
Good to know.
Thank you, Warden. Thank you, Warden. Commissioner Kerski?
Comment and a question, and comment is, for the people that might be watching this on CityLink, and what are we talking about here? When someone's arrested and goes into the custody of Warden Gromer and his staff, we take care of all their medical bills. If they're arrested with a, some sort of ongoing health concern, most of the time, we get to buy that. So, this is three million, almost three point five million dollars for healthcare for the people that are in our jail.
Correct.
So, that our taxpayers understand what this is about. My question is, how do we determine the reimbursement? Is that a Medicare reimbursement rate, or is it a negotiated? How do we?
It's a Medicare reimbursement rate. We've worked out a process with the local health systems and local providers where we'll have, they'll send us the bills, our county human services will look at the bills, send them to the state for Medicaid review, and then we'll pay that Medicaid amount through the health systems. And it's a complicated process, because there's a lot of different people touching, it's touching a lot of different hands as it goes through the process, but again, as we've been established with Armour for a while now, and over the last couple of years, these processes have really gotten ironed out, and they're working very, very well.
Thank you.
Any additional comments? I'm gonna jump on Jeff's, on Burr's wagon and say thank you so much for what you've done, because I know, just changing vendors when we went to Armour and stuff, there's always a lot of adjustments, and I thank Armour for sticking with us too through the tough times, and employment was hard when trying to find nurses and staff to staff a jail, and they stuck with us, and we also stuck with them, and I do hear no issues, and I had the same thought as Jeff. When I read, I thought, man, they must, they're running smoothly, which is exactly what we want, and so I appreciate all the work that you guys have put into making this relationship work with Armour.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second to sign the contract. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Next one, seventeen. Authorize the chairman to sign the 2019 inmate housing contract between Minnehaha County and Fault County.
This one's very straightforward. We entered into some housing contracts with a few counties after the fire at the correction center this summer. Fault County is one of those counties. That contract just expires at the end of the year, and we're asking to renew that contract. Fortunately, we haven't had to utilize the rental beds to the extent we did initially. Our jail numbers have been favorable for us through the fall and into the winter, so we're not utilizing these beds to the extent that we were previously. I think currently, we have three inmates that are housed at Fault County, and we're just looking to renew that contract. There's no change in the dollar amount or the specifics of the contract.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to authorize the chair to sign the agreement with Fault County.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. And thank you again, Warden, for the work that you did, just juggling people when we had that fire, because that was also a really big deal, so thank you. Item number eighteen is a briefing on the Sheriff's Office vehicle purchase from the approval of the 2017 Justice Assistant Grant, JAG spending plan. Good morning, Joe.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Bosman, Lieutenant with the Sheriff's Office. This morning, I'm providing just an update, a briefing of sort, on a Justice Assistant Grant, we call it JAG, that is awarded to us. It has been annually. It's a split grant between us and the Sioux Falls Police Department, where each of us receives a certain portion of the grant. Part of the grant requirements is that we have to send a spending plan into the federal government, which is a plan that has been authorized by you guys as commissioners. Problem with this one, it was a 2017 grant, so it might seem like it was a little while ago. September fifth, 2017, was when you guys authorized this joint spending plan. In that spending plan, we had requested the purchase of a sedan-type vehicle to be used for the purpose of our civil division as they go out and serve protection orders and certain domestic-related paperwork to individuals. We are anticipating on purchasing that vehicle, using the grant money which has recently came in, and we're gonna be doing that after the end of the 2018 fiscal year, so when it starts in 2019, we're gonna be purchasing that vehicle off the spending plan.
Any questions for Joe on this item? Look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Oh, oh, excuse me. It is just a briefing.
Oh, yeah.
That's right. Thank you, Olivia. So, thank you for the briefing.
No problem. Thank you.
Item number nineteen is consider a motion to adopt a rescinding resolution, Minnehaha County thirteen dash twenty, for the Minnehaha County Criminal Justice Advisory Committee. Carol.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Muller, Commission Office. And I'm thinking the easiest is probably just to read the resolution, because it takes us through everything. And this is a resolution rescinding MC thirteen dash twenty, establishing the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee, whereas Minnehaha County established the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee in 2013 to review the adequacy of the county's current committee, community corrections facility, and make recommendations related to how to meet the increasing demand on jail and minimum and medium security housing, whereas Minnehaha County will have the jail expansion construction completed in 2020. Now therefore, may it be resolved by the Minnehaha County, South Dakota Board of County Commissioners, that resolution MC thirteen dash twenty is rescinded and that the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee is dissolved.
Thank you, Carol. Like she said, this committee was formed in 2013 to look at our jail overcrowding and what we needed to go forward, and I would just like to thank all the people that did participate in that group and put in a lot of long hours and made good suggestions for us to move forward. It wasn't a quick decision by any stretch of the imagination. I did speak with the sheriff, and he agreed that it was appropriate to rescind this resolution, since we have now moved on and the jail will be up and running soon, soon. So, if there's any questions, I can try to answer them, or Carol to, Commissioner Bender?
I just more have a comment, that I think, you know, a lot of times, these things get formed, and then they kick around, and we have, you know, we have, we currently have other initiatives going on through the MacArthur Grant that have similar sounding names, and so I think it's, you know, it's much of a cleanup item as anything, that this was a committee that served a very valid function and was, and its purpose has ended, and so I think it is very helpful to clean it up, so that we don't constantly get confused about what we're talking about.
Yeah. If there's no more comments, I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. I need a roll call vote.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Yes.
Burr?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Hi Berger?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number twelve is Minnehaha County Commission Liaison Reports. Are there any reports? Commissioner Burr?
I'd like to make a couple of comments. One is Metro Communications Met, and as we know, Paul Nedering House is leaving that body, and we've determined to put Jessica Mundell, the Deputy Director, in charge, not as a permanent basis, but she'll be running things, I believe, starting January third. Interestingly also, despite the fact that our population continues to increase by like five grand a year, apparently, people have fewer phones than ever, and telephone revenue for nine-one-one continues to decline. It'd be nice to have an audit of some of these things, and the state apparently can order that if they choose. Also, you may know that Senator Nezba contacted us about a discussion and appropriations out in Pierre about a forty-one cent tax on telecommunications lines. With that money going to be for state radio, at least the state's part of state radio, with the counties to pick up the additional, it'd be nice if we had some extra money to work with building a new metro communications facility. That's that report. And I just want to say, we also had an ambulance governance meeting and with our new system, and we had a great discussion, and a couple of issues were brought up that I think that we'll be working on.
Commissioner Burr, any additional liaison reports? I was in Pierre this last week for the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners Board Meeting, so just a couple of comments from that. They had, Rick Melmer gave a little presentation on us that they're looking at creating a local government leadership program, something like the state leadership program that's offered right now. He was actually looking for input, whether we were interested or not. It would be targeting school board and county commissioner across the state, and just to give us a higher level of civic and community concern and participation and our civic involvement in community, and just kind of give you a brief history of the South Dakota history, and then just moving forward. And so, he was just kind of looking for, from our group, on what they thought the participation level would be. I think the cost was like fifteen hundred dollars. It took up three months, went over three months, and it was about six days of time, and so he was looking for comments for us on what we thought that the interest would be on the commission level. So, we did have some discussion on that. Also talked about a few of the different proposed bills that are coming out of the South Dakota Association of County Commissions. I did talk about some of the things that we, Minnehaha County is interested in, is the double taxation. I think we will get support from the association going forward with that. We obviously would be in charge of finding our own sponsors to that bill, and also brought up other issues like the forensic medical bill. State radios was discussed very briefly, and just a short conversation on presumptive probation, and that may also be coming up. Two other bills that have come up that they are moving forward. Brown County is moving forward with a bill that, at the end of the fiscal year for the state government, there's usually a budget reserve left over, and that, so seventy, the bill would say that seventy-five percent of that unobligated budget reserve would go to the state reserve fund, and twenty-five percent of that unobligated reserve would go to the local bridge improvement grant. They talked about how a lot of these counties are still not getting enough money to replace some of the bridges. One of the counties that was there said that they just discovered that one of their bridges is in sad need of repair, and they've had to go down to, it's a major thoroughfare over a river in their county, and they've had to go down to one-lane traffic on that because of the load limits, and of course, it's creating a huge hardship. He said it was about twenty-five to thirty miles in order to divert away from that bridge. And so, there was a lot of interest in that bill that came out of Brown County. The other one was out of Harding County, and they are looking to amend a current state statute that deals with state reimbursement to counties who are dealing with disasters. Their proposed legislation would decrease the mill levy by point five of the assessed value of your county. So, say we had a tornado go through and rip out half of our county, we would have to pay a certain mill levy on our current assessed value in order to mitigate the issues that happened in our county, and then the state kicks in after a certain amount is spent. Well, for most of those counties, and actually for Minnehaha County, we wouldn't be able to afford the amount that we would be required to pay under the current law, and so they are looking to decrease that, decrease that amount in further legislation. I do have a paper in my file that shows the proposed bill write-up. That's a really short explanation of what that bill would, but I can give you a copy of both of those bills, from Harding County and from Brown County, so that you can look over them and maybe better understand. Commissioner Burr?
Brown County bill, so, is it, if the county has money left over at the end of the year?
It's the state reserve fund. The state reserve fund, at the end of their year, they have leftover revenue, and it just automatically goes into their reserve fund, and so this would take twenty-five percent of the money at the end of the state year and put it into counties. There's also like a level that they have to keep their reserve fund at, and so if you came to a year where the state actually wasn't gonna make it, obviously, the money would not go into the, to the local bridge fund, and also, if there was no money, they wouldn't be allocating a percentage to the local bridge fund, so. But I'd be happy to have someone in the office make copies of those two, so that you can at least read through them and see what those proposals are. Make more sense probably if you read them, so. Other than that, I guess it was a good meeting, and there's no more liaison reports. We'll go on to new business. Any old business? I would mention that next week, Tuesday, is December twenty-fifth, and so there will be no one working here. We have moved our commission meeting to Thursday, the twenty-seventh, at nine AM, I believe, again, so that we can take care of county business and pay the bills before the end of the year. So, that's just a reminder to us and to our listening audience.